All right, it looks like we have the select board here. So I'm going to call the February 8th, 2021, Select Board Meeting to order at 4:01. Welcome, everyone. And Susan, would you please call membership present? Susan?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Escobedo?
Present.
Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Myself, Ms. Bates, present.
Thank you. And we have a full complement of the Select Board members here today, which is great, as always. Consent agenda is the Town Account and Warrants of February 4th, 2021. Gift acceptance from the Umbrella Arts Center. $1,500 for the drive-in movie event in the fall. The Rotary Club of Concord, $1,500 for the drive-in movie event in the fall with thanks to them for that gift. Do I hear a motion?
Move to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Thank you. That's unanimous in the chair, so declares the town manager's report. Steven?
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to provide a quick update on vaccines. I'm sure as many of you know and are hearing from residents, it's been a challenging process that we've been trying to roll out to the best of our abilities. You know, I think it's, we currently have a phone appointment system that we rolled out last week, and the volume of calls was such that it crashed our entire phone system. We are working on a technical fix for that, so that doesn't happen. We apologize to people for the busy signals, but at 100 doses per week, those spaces are going to fill up fast. I've heard from some residents about, you know, could there be different options? And we've thought about a lot of different ways to do it, and we went with a phone system specifically based on the feedback that we had received about the challenges of an online registration system. So naturally, the feedback I've gotten is also in part, why aren't we registering online? So all I can say is, all I can do is appeal for patience and just let folks know that we're trying as hard as we possibly can with the resources we have at our disposal. And, you know, I will continue to look at ways to try and make this process better and more efficient, but we're still restricted in the doses as we sit here today. I don't know if anybody had any questions to come to a vaccine specifically?
I just wanted to bring up the fact that my internet keeps freezing on everybody, and I don't know whether that's me alone or whether that's happening to everybody. But...
I think that's because you just said out loud that it's been working really well.
Thanks, Dan. So, yeah, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just thinking for the vaccine, since there is such a limited supply, that maybe an approach that just works with a more limited population, like the proposal to vaccinate residents of the Housing Authority units, you know, might be more practical than just having a free-for-all. I know someone who made a call every five minutes through the whole time, you know, last Thursday, and was very frustrated, and of course, meanwhile, created problems for the town. So maybe if, you know, we don't create such an open free-for-all, it might work better.
I hear you on that. We've talked internally about that. Not everybody at CHA is over 75, I don't think. So, you know, that we're trying to follow the state's guidance, you know, to the letter. And so it's one of those things where we've talked about that internally right now. The goal is to just get the vaccine into the arms of as many 75-plus-year-olds as we possibly can. And it is a bit of a free, I've heard it analogized as, you know, trying to be the fourth caller on a radio contest or trying to get concert tickets online. Like, it's all of those things. And I'm not trying to make light of the situation. It is deeply frustrating. It's deeply frustrating for all of us that are involved, because all we want to do is vaccinate our community and use the setup that we have to do that. And to have the most important part out of our control is maddening. And, you know, I think, like I said, we've talked about different options. Right now, we're just trying to get as many 75-year-olds vaccinated as possible. And hopefully, over the next few weeks, we're able to get better news on, like I said, a number of doses. So until we have a different arrangement, because I think, you know, Matt, if you play that thread out a little bit, you know the next thing we get is, well, why are only those residents getting stuff? I'm 75, I'm eligible, why can't I have it? And so that's, like I said, we're just trying to follow the guidance and make do with the best we have.
So Terry?
And once you got them scheduled, how did the actual vaccinations go? Did the process go well?
Easily, yeah. Smoothly. That's the part we're really good at. I've said this before, we run flu clinics every year. That part, the town, is exceptionally good at. And I did hear from one resident, and I appreciated the feedback very much. The intake was basically, you know, your number 75, give me your name and number. And then, once they got through the first 100 callers, they would then follow back up with those people and get the medical information versus doing that all in real time on the phone. They found a way to kind of compress that part of the call, which is good, but that's still only the first 100. So I don't know how to say this any differently. I wish I really had a better report to give on this, I truly do. And I hope people can understand that. It's not something that, it's not a situation we thought we were going to be in or like being in at all.
I received in the mail today, as I'm sure others are beginning to receive, a card that shows all the ways in which you can access the information regarding the vaccinations in COVID in general. You know, and given the situation you're in, you're at least making an effort to make sure everybody has multiple ways that they can get the information.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's, Linda, I'm sorry, but I think that's an excellent point. That's the local effort. And obviously, if we had our druthers conquered, the town of Concord would vaccinate the town of Concord. And, but there are lots of new ways that the state is pushing out to do, to get vaccines from pharmacies, doctors' offices, things like that. So there are other ways besides the town of Concord. And people should really be refreshing while redialing at the same time, you know, refreshing the state website and redialing the time, I mean, whatever you need to do to try and get an appointment. But it's not just the town. People can, there are other options that people should really be chasing as well. And we do have information on all of that. You know, we link to the DPH website, which is where the state's primary information is accessed.
I just want to comment that this is a really frustrating time, but it's a really good problem to have. When you think about where we were a year ago, at least we have a vaccine now. We see the light at the end of the tunnel. Things are moving along slower than we want, but they're moving. So thanks for everybody being patient and helping on this.
And the more we can get the word out to people who just don't understand or don't know what's happening, I think the better, the more understanding we can achieve. So, and, you know, the board knows this, and people who are maybe either attending here or watching, if you've been watching how this has unfolded, we get information on a Friday from the state for implementation on Monday. And sometimes that information can be a dramatic shift in approach, like when we went from what we expected to be a local vaccination process to a centralized mass vaccination site or privatized. We may get a call on Friday this week that says, you know what? 1,000 doses are arriving next week. I mean, we just, it's still continuing to move very quickly, and we are, we're all over it. It's just, this is the place we're in. But if things change, we're going to change.
Okay. Continue with your report?
Yes, I do. So the Third White Pond Public Forum was rescheduled because of the snow event last week. It's tomorrow night at 6:00 over Zoom. There's a snow event tomorrow, but it's not going to be the same significance as the one that was happening last week, which, if we look out our windows, we can still see the remnants of. So that, I hope people will join us. It'll be really a brief presentation on the kind of final tweaking of the design based on feedback from the Disability Commission. But I think it's, you know, there were some great, there was some great feedback from the commission, so it'll be some interesting visuals that people can see. And again, we'll get more feedback from the community. So, and just a little bit on snow operations. You know, I think we, CPW has been doing, I think, an excellent job managing the snow and then clearing the snow for the business districts. It's been a lot last few, last week or so. And like I said, we're getting more snow tomorrow. So, you know, I think if people can be patient with us on that, but also do their part, you know, don't travel if you don't need to when it's snowing, so they can do the clearing that they need to do and help us out, that would be great. But, and the other thing is, if you have a hydrant, there are 1,300 hydrants. If there's one near your house and it isn't cleared out, and you have the ability, please, you know, just adopt a hydrant, is what they're calling it. It's a, it is a critical time saver. If, God forbid, there was a fire, you know, it'd have to have to dig, if firefighters had to dig out to get to the hydrant, it would be critical time loss. So if there's a hydrant out in front of your house, please help us out by clearing it. We did, I did include in the packet the presentation that we gave to the Finance Committee as an update on guidelines, as I articulated to the Finance Committee. You know, it's a very, it's a very different year, and the budget process is evolving differently than I thought it was going to. I think, I'm not going to speak for our CFO, but I think she would agree that it's lining up in a much more unusual way. And I say that because we're trying to budget while we're still in the pandemic with constricted services, but expect to be back to full operation within that same fiscal year. And trying to find that balancing point, because I'm going to guess that once people are vaccinated and we're kind of past this part of the pandemic, people are, his expectation of full service is going to be immediate, where they're going to want to go back to, they're going to want that sense of normalcy and that sense of going into town departments and getting full service from the library or, you know, rec programs or whatever. And sort of budget for that while we're still in this constricted mode is a bit of a challenge. And so we talked to the Finance Committee about, you know, the guideline is based off of the amended and reduced FY21 budget that was approved at the town meeting, not the original one that was proposed back in February 2020. And that's the full operation budget. And so the guideline should really be based in large measure off of the original FY21 budget. And so that's one of the discussions we're having. I mean, certainly, we're trying to be as rigorous as we can to reduce expenditures given the loss of revenues, but it's, we're kind of at a betwixt and between part. So this is going to be, I think, a somewhat unusual year in terms of what the budget ends up looking like. So we're talking to the Finance Committee about that. And then, just a couple of fun things. We do have, we're in the process of hiring a land manager, something that's been talked about for a while. I think it was a goal for Vision Concord. So we've got a recruitment going, and I think we've got a strong candidate pool. And then, we have a new, DPLM and Natural Resources have converted our trail guides into a trail book that I think is in the process of being printed. And so that'll be available for, that'll be available for distribution, I think, in the coming weeks or months. So that's kind of exciting. I know it's nice to have an updated, you know, updated, like, information people can have about our local trails. And any, that's about it for me. Anything, any questions?
Matt?
Yeah, I mean, I have a number of questions about the guideline feedback or input, but I, you know, it's not an agenda item on our meeting today. I'm just curious when we might have an opportunity to discuss some of these points.
I think the Finance Committee has work to do on the guideline. And so I think once that's finalized, then we could probably talk about their guideline as the budget process unfolds.
Okay.
And I think you're also scheduled probably, I'm looking ahead to mid to later in March.
Yeah, I think the town manager's budget, I think, is due to the board on March 15th, or to the Finance Committee. It's due to the Finance Committee on March 15th, so we'll have a clear sense of that.
Okay. It's just, I'm curious about things like, it looks like there's no capital budget provision?
Oh, that's, it just hasn't been finished yet.
Okay.
We're still working, yeah, we're still working, we're about two-thirds of the way through drafting the budget, and that we haven't gotten to the capital part yet.
Okay, and a 15% increase in the general government budget line?
Um, yes, but I think that has more to do with reassignment of expenditure than increase. But I have to go back and look at that more specifically. So these are all things we'll go through as the budget process unfolds.
Okay, yeah. And I'm also just curious where PPP fund offsets are shown in this?
You mean CARES Act?
Oh, yeah, sorry. That's the code word for...
Yeah, we don't get PPP.
I guess that was for the prior fiscal year, so it wouldn't show up here. You're not anticipating any relief?
Well, that's another, that's another open-ended thing. We, you know, there's discussion about state and local relief as they negotiate.
Even federal.
The next round of, the next federal relief bill, they're talking about state and local relief, but we don't know yet.
Yeah, because that could have a big...
So a lot, so a lot of this is fluid?
Undoes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I guess that they look like there were these additions that changed it from a 1.8 increase to a 6-point-something percent?
I think those are just our predictions right now, but that's just, those are all requests. Those are all departmental requests, so that's not pared down at all.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just curious where we land. All right, thanks. Those are...
So I think this will be, yeah, I think this is your first budget?
Yeah, my first rodeo on this one.
Yeah, so why don't we talk offline? I can kind of walk through some of, just the basics of the process as opposed to the specifics of the budget.
Yeah, and I realize we get it more toward the end, but, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. You did pretty well there, Matt, getting all your questions in, nonetheless. Okay. Any other comments? Terry?
So I'll save my questions on these items for the future, but I just wanted to thank you for including the public-private partnership information and the RHSO information, and I'm assuming those are going to be agenda items in the future. And this gives us time to read them, that's great. And about the hydrants, I think that's wonderful, having me adopt a hydrant program. Is there a way that a resident can actually sign up on the website? I saw, I happen to see in the town of Tinsborough, they have a cute little page, and you put your name on it and you say what hydrant it is. And that gives the citizens some recognition for the work they're doing and some, reminds them to take the responsibility. And I'm just wondering if we can do something simple like that. I could send you the link if that's helpful.
Sure, I don't think we have anything like that. I think it's just, if it's in front of your house, try and shovel it off if you can. But we can certainly, I mean, we don't want people repainting them or anything like that, you know? Like when Kramer adopted a highway on Seinfeld, like, I don't think we want anything like that. It's just, it's just, if you have it in front of your house, just try and clear it out, because it's for the protection of your own house and your neighbors. But I'd love to see the link, because if there's a more inventive way to do it, I'd be happy to run that by you.
All right. I think you, have you concluded your remarks?
Jane has her hand up, I don't know.
Okay, Jane, sorry.
Hi, sorry, and I moved rooms hoping that the connection would be better, but it's still pretty broken. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and/or hopefully give some feedback to the trail guide that's coming up, coming out, and I think that's really exciting. And I know there's been some concerns about the way trails were depicted in the previous trail guide, and I am assuming that that's going to be, that this one will expand and perhaps also include the Balls Hill property, some of the things that we've added. And that's wonderful. Will there be sort of a, any kind of frontispiece or component of hiker education about, you know, the do's and don'ts on the different trails? Because we have, we have a range of sort of, of known rules. And I think it would be a great opportunity to include that level of education in this guide.
I haven't seen it, to be honest with you, but I know the people that are working on it have been managing the town's trails for a number of years, so I trust that they are going to do that. But it's a good question, and I could certainly relay that. And perhaps when it's done, we could, when it's done, we could certainly have Marcia and Ordilia come present that to the board.
That'd be great, thanks.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I'm going to move on to the chair's report. I just want to thank the town and Aaron Stevenson in particular for the adaptations that all of you have been making to turn around the information about COVID as quickly as you can and get that posted on the website. I think you're doing everything you possibly can under the circumstances in terms of when the information comes in. Terry already touched on this briefly, but there were some additional items in the packet, and there were some questions about that. There, we were in a fortunate position this week for two fairly dense reports in terms of the information that was in them, to include them ahead of them coming on an upcoming agenda for people to review. There will be no Select Board Meeting on February 15th, President's Day, as the town celebrates this holiday. And given that all of you have been doing a yeoman's job, meeting every week instead of every other week since last March of 2020, I'm sure you're going to welcome this extra day. And then, I would just remind everybody to please get ready for the town preview meeting for the warrants. That is on February 27th, Saturday, at 9:00 in the morning. Be sure that you're working with your committees in terms of their preparation for all of this. There are some due dates in advance of the 27th, when the town manager's office needs that material. So that concludes my remarks. So we're fortunate to have Representatives Dawn Gorillo and Pat Nelson here today, and perhaps others, to give us a middle school committee update. And I know that you're already embarked in doing this with a number of groups in town. So thank you for including us in that agenda item. We, Pat and Dawn will be joining the chairs meeting as a way to get information on an ongoing basis out to all the committees. And in addition, we were recently asked to have communications sent to each of the committee chairs regarding updates from the Middle School Building Committee, so that committee chairs can in turn dispense that to their committee members and reach as many Concord citizens as possible with information that may be helpful to everyone. So, welcome, Dawn and Pat, and I'm going to let you begin your presentation.
Thank you, Linda. I'm Pat Nelson, the new, relatively new co-chair for the Building Committee. I retired his position for non-COVID medical reasons, and as vice chair, I stepped into that, into that role. Dawn Gorillo is here with me. She is the other co-chair and sort of the technical wizard and totally understands the architectural piece of this and the building piece of it. We're also joined by Lori Hunter, the Superintendent of Schools, who you know, and Kristin Olson from SMAA, our architectural firm. She is our project manager. And Peter Martini, the owner's project manager from Hill International, is also...
Pat, if I could just interrupt you just for a second. I know, Dr. Hunter, you have some conflicting meetings, so I hope you can stay with us as long as possible. So thank you for making the effort to be here. Sorry, Pat, go ahead.
No, that's okay, but I will ask Lori if she wants to say a few words about anything that she thinks she might not be able to talk about if we go to the slides first.
No, I think you can go over to the slides, and, you know, we're just grateful for the opportunity to give you the update, and Zoom allows me to be in two places at once almost, so... I just, I can go back to them in a minute, so I'm glad to be here.
Okay, great. So Kristin from SMAA has put together a pretty succinct slide presentation. I think this is about 20 minutes, 15, 20 minutes. And Kristin will run through the slides, and I think someone needs to give her the power to do that.
All right. Great. So, thank you for inviting us here to present this evening. I'm going to go through these a little bit more quickly just to make sure that we have time for questions and conversation, and we're happy to go back to any slides that you have questions on or definitions that you'd like when it comes down to the many acronyms that we're going to be having over the course of this project. So this is a slide presentation that we developed at the beginning of January to kind of put framework around the process for the feasibility study this year. So we've done a lot of work since then, and I'll work to try and fold in some of those updates as we go through the slides. In any case, we wanted to start with a goals recap, specific charge for the 2021 feasibility study. As you know, there was a feasibility study already performed in part in 2020 before the pandemic hold. We will go over critical information and decisions, project cost drivers, and then next steps with process and timeline. So our goals recap started out with just reframing that the total project cost limit is 100 million. We understand that's a range of 80 to 100 million, and that is the total project cost limit in comparison to the estimated construction cost limit, which is also a range of up to $80 million in construction cost. The delta between the 80 and the 100, for those of you not familiar, is the soft costs, which include investigations, design fees, OPM fees, anything that supports the project. The construction cost is literally the hard cost. We know that the goal is to consolidate the PBD and Sandborne Middle Schools on the Sandborne Middle School site, the design enrollment target of 700 students, grade six through eight. We understood early on, the team teaching model is a cornerstone of the educational plan and is to be planned for in the new building. We're know that the gymnasium and the auditorium are both, are both very important to the community, and there is a lot of discussion around how to size those best, so we'll look at those. And then also the sustainability priorities of having a net-zero-ready building and the predicted EUI of 25 or better and ultra-low-energy design. But we always want to keep in the forefront that we, our primary goal is that, that new middle school that is a next-generation facility for many generations to come. So we framed, again, this new, this restart with the analogy of the three-legged stool, because there are a lot of vision, there's a big vision, and there are a lot of goals, and we're trying to pack it into constrained budget, of course. And so we just wanted to kind of talk to everyone about the fact that you have this three-legged stool that must be in balance at all times, and it's comprised of the budget, the quality, or also scope, and also schedule. So if you were to have an extremely high standard for the schedule, want something to be very compact, then that would in fact affect the quality in the budget. If you were to say you have a very constrained budget, then that would affect your quality and schedule. So just, just really hearkening back to this analogy about the three-legged stool that we all have to keep in mind as we make decisions and as we assign trade-offs to any one of those legs and how they affect the others. Sometimes the stool has different namings for its legs, but in general, it's just that emphasis that everything must be in balance. We were receiving a lot of questions about what decisions and information occurs during which phase. We are currently on contract for feasibility study and schematic design, and that'll get us up to the town vote and the scope definition in its entirety. In the feasibility study, you're typically defining your educational plan and enrollment. We are determining a site or location in the project, which is a given for the Concord Middle School. We're developing the program, which is the list of spaces and the square footage for the building. We're ascertaining site constraints, conditions, and also program in terms of the existing schools. We're looking at conceptual site and building plans, going over big-picture goals for materials and massing, deciding if it's an all-electric building or has gas heating and electric kitchen or gas kitchen. In our case, again, this was a given, that this will be an all-electric building with an all-electric kitchen. And then you're also working to refine and confirm your preliminary or target EUI, which, again, for this facility, the goal is the 25 EUI or better. We'll be taking an early pass at making sure that the furniture, fixtures, and equipment budget is commensurate with the need and also the auto-visual and security goals as those all roll up. as those all roll up into the project cost. Again, the feasibility phase is not necessarily... Some towns may not have a budget locked in at feasibility phase. Some may wait until schematic design. Some are hard on their budget immediately, and so that's something that we also need to keep track of in all phases of the project. And then lastly, in feasibility study phase, it's important to discuss and determine the construction delivery method, because we'll talk a little bit later about how that impacts the cost. So schematic design will have all of those decisions made, and then we get to dive into a little bit more detail on everything and do some more detailed system selections for materials and engineering systems and so on. Also kicking off this year, we wanted to talk a little bit about costs that we cannot necessarily control and costs that we can control. Demolition of the Sandborne building is a given. It is necessary for the new building to be completely operational with its site and parking. Abatement of the building, pre-demolition, also given and a necessity. We have estimates for both of those, and those are considered fixed costs in our mind. The septic system, it's our understanding that there is no connection nearby to town sewer, and so we know that there's an onsite septic system, and that would be replaced with a new septic. Also, cost drivers that we cannot control is whatever code is in effect at the time that the building is permitted and the costs that that entails. And then escalation is in part influenced by the schedule, of course, and when the bid date is for the project, but it is in fact a result of market conditions, and those are things that we cannot control. Costs that we can control are the building square footage and programs, so the types and number of spaces and their square footages, the building engineering systems. So big picture, there is a range of engineering systems that one can select from, and we study those with everyone and come to a conclusion on those. Site program, how much site development, what types of fields, how much parking, and so on. That can be controlled to a certain extent. Building materials and construction delivery method and sustainability. For construction delivery method, there are two types. The construction manager at risk, also known as Chapter 149A, and design bid build, also known as Chapter 149. So those are the two construction delivery methods. Again, just knowing where our vision and our goals took us in the last year, we just knew that there is going to be a lot of detailed discussion required to make sure that we could achieve all of the goals and that trade-offs inherently come with those decisions. So I have a few slides that go over the subcommittees and groups that we work with, and I'm going to go over those a little bit more quickly so that we can, again, get to conversation. The educational leadership team is really a driver of the educational plan. The educational plan was completed and approved by the school committee, I believe, on the 26th of January, completed by the school department, voted by the school committee recently, and that's available for reading. It is the foundation and the cornerstone of our summary of spaces in our program, and that is in fact where the educational leadership team really leads. We interface a lot with the design subcommittee, and they are helping us to review and make sure that we are meeting all of the requirements of the community. They will also be helping us to set the vision and goals for massing of materials and to provide feedback and review on any site and building concepts. The Sustainability Subcommittee, as it speaks to itself, I think, in the title, is inherently assisting and advising on the sustainability components of the project. And then here we have the Select Board and Town Finance Committee. We really do plan on keeping you all in the loop and in decision-making for the construction delivery method, which is a form of contract with the contractor in construction phase. And then whether there are or aren't any other funding sources was a discussion at the earlier onset at this time. We're understanding that the entire project is to be delivered within the $100 million project cost cap. We're not assuming that there are any outside funding sources. And then questions that arose over the course of the last month are what the fate is of the Peabody School site, and we understand that that will be returned to the town for town decision. And then, of course, keeping our eye on the project cost with the Select Board and Finance Committee. We also work with a small management and leadership team, just to make sure that we are meeting our milestones and getting all of the information we need. The building project has a finance subcommittee that we're going to be discussing at the next Building Committee meeting. And then, of course, a communications subcommittee that is really focused on making sure that information is available and accessible by the community. We've been doing a lot more than this slide even captures in terms of reaching out to various community groups, and so we've met with the Association for Music Parents. We've met with Town Rec. We've met with the League of Women Voters. We've had a lot of interfaces with a lot of groups, because we really do want to make sure to get community input as we are developing this core piece of the project. And then also, we have, in addition to these smaller groups, such as even coming here this evening, larger informational Q&amp;A sessions, which we're calling community forums. We had one already at the end of January, and one is planned for the end of February, then March and April. So those forums are intended to capture community input about major pieces of the project before any decisions are made. So we'll talk here in a moment about the process, which is that the design team will bring information to the subcommittees for discussion and for feedback. We incorporate that discussion and feedback and bring it back to the subcommittee for further review. We bring it to the community for feedback, and only at that point in time does the subcommittee recommend any decision to the larger building committee, where there would typically be your vote for any piece of critical decision-making. And so then, we thought we'd try and break the feasibility study down into larger pieces so that people could really understand kind of what we're doing in each block of time. We're here about midway through the development of the space summary and the project requirements. And then we'll move into the concept development in the second two months and then generate the report in the fifth month. So this is just overlaid with our planned Building Committee meetings and those community forums that were mentioned. And lastly, I know you all have received this and perhaps have had a chance to read through it, but this is kind of that process, again, in words, where at the end of January, it was important to us to have the educational leadership team really finalize the educational plan and inform us about the educational piece of the space summary development. We then worked with the educational plan to translate it into a list of spaces, which the design subcommittee is now reviewing. And at the end of February, they will be planning on making a recommendation to the Building Committee. In early March, that would be voted by the Building Committee, and then we'd move into the concepts and do that similar kind of cycle of design subcommittee review and Building Committee vote. So then we have just a recap of our goals, and we can swiftly move along to conversation.
Thank you very much. Questions from the Select Board or comments? Well, I'll begin. I noticed that you mentioned the community forums. Are they being published routinely on the town website? The meeting dates?
Yeah, they are certainly on the Middle School Building Committee website. And where they show up on the town website, I don't know exactly.
Can I recommend that they get submitted for that purpose?
Sure. Sure. I know we work with Erin, and Heather's been doing that, but I'll make sure that that's happening.
Other comments or questions from Select Board members?
Linda, if I could, I just on the page about next steps between Sustainability Subcommittee and Select Board and Town Finance Committee after Building Committee Chair review. I'm not sure whether this is within the purview of this feasibility study or whether there's a way to assign it somehow separately, but the idea of other funding sources, especially for a building that should and could meet so many of the, not just the town's sustainability goals, but also the region and the states, figuring out a way to access, or at least a listing of all the different grants and other forms of funding, whether they're, you know, payback funding through efficiency or ways of attaching to federal grant programs. It'd be useful to make sure that that was included, again, if not in the feasibility study, that there was a process for that.
Okay. Anyone from your team want to comment on that?
I can say that in the realm of sustainability, there do tend to be some programs that can be accessed. And I know that we've had a very early conversation with the municipalite about the solar PV, because those can be funded in different mechanisms and things like that. So we will keep an eye on that, and we'll make sure that we're being diligent and accessing what we can.
And I'd just like to follow up and say that our Sustainability Subcommittee group has been spearheading some of those conversations, so I know that they're well underway. And we'll engage our design professionals at the appropriate time. So I know that they are already thinking that and actively working on where to go with any of those.
Good, because there are increasingly federal funds available.
Yes, thank you. And we'll be sure to share that with the Sustainability Subcommittee. I see Kate's on, but I'm not going to ask her to speak, but she's a member on the Sustainability Subcommittee, obviously. But we will convey that to our Sustainability Subcommittee and ask them to work with our design professionals to actively look for any opportunities that we can engage in any grants or additional funding. Thank you.
So as your committee struggles with balancing those three legs of the stool, as you use the metaphor, are you... Well, I assume you're keeping a list of projects that may be deferred post-construction? Because we've certainly experienced that with our other school building projects?
Dawn, did you want to start?
Yeah, I saw you on mute, and I didn't want to cut you off, Kristin. I think that's a fair assessment. Some things are obviously easier to detach, if you will, from a project, whether it's a field or a site opportunity versus like infrastructure and/or solar arrays, things that potentially we can plan for. And, you know, in the case of a PV array, you can have all the conduits in place. You can have the structure available to hold the weight, et cetera. You plan your roof and mechanical systems in a way that can accept them in the future. So just from a planning standpoint, we're certainly having those discussions. I think for us, the harder piece that we're struggling with, so if anyone has any advice or comments on this, we would appreciate it. I think it's the overall size of the gymnasium and auditorium, recognizing a community desire to have a little bit more there, but again, trying to balance what we can afford under the 80 to 100 million budget range and still trying to accommodate some of those spaces, but maybe not to the level that the community is looking for. So we're still trying to balance that, and we're actively listening to groups. In the case of the League of Women Voters, we heard on Friday, you know, a town meeting, for example, what would be needed as far as size of auditorium. We've heard that rental at the high school can be expensive, and is there an opportunity here? What does that do to parking? Obviously, there are a lot of pieces to that puzzle, and we're just trying to wrap our heads around what we can afford for the middle school. And then, you know, is there an opportunity to enhance it, if you will, for the sake of the community and/or municipality? So that's where we're struggling. So if anyone has any... If anyone has a crystal ball, we'd love some help with that. But honestly, that's really our struggle right now, is I think we are in a really good place with the school meeting, the educational plan. If anyone's been following along and participated in any of our design subcommittee meetings or, you know, any meetings since the beginning of January, as Kristin mentioned, which was when this presentation was originally from, a lot of work happened on their end. And we're in a really good place educationally. I think our big struggle is the sort of shared slash community spaces.
Matt?
I see lots of hands.
Terry was first, but I think I may still jump ahead, because it's right on the same topic, which is, would it be fair to say that that $100 million budget is for the educational objectives? That to the extent that there are additional objectives met for the community, the overall project cost might exceed 100 million. And there are various creative methods being proposed to co-fund or, you know, create a different enterprise structure or something to do some of those things. But I think that the community should prepare itself that if we're to achieve all of the things that people are talking about, that this $100 million number is not the number really ultimately that they would be looking at. Is that fair?
Thank you, Matt. I think that's fair, although we're doing our best to balance some sort of, in the case of an auditorium, trying to get something. It's just a question of, is it enough to meet the needs of the community? And same with the gymnasium. It's certainly enough educationally, and it fits within the 80 to 100. It's just, you know, in order to accommodate more, my feeling right now is that it could push it over, so we're trying not to go there unless we hear strong feedback that the desire and appetite for it to go over, to accommodate these community spaces, might be there. So I know that's not always the best answer, because it's, you know, putting... We're trying to say we're doing our best with the 80 to 100 and meet the educational needs. That's where we are. And we have a building, we believe, that sizes appropriately to do all of that, with a small auditorium and a gym that fits the need educationally. Our struggle is, if there's more, if there's a desire for more, is there an appetite to potentially pay a little bit more? And that's what we're trying to work through.
If I could touch on that as well, Linda, just to build on Dawn's point. The 80 to 100, obviously, is project cost. And so the Middle School Building Committee has a charge and has a mission to present to the community the building that would fit within that $100 million project cost. I think what Dawn is articulating is, as we sit here now, there are things that I think the community would be interested in having that won't fit within that budget. And so I think as we get through feasibility, I think, as Kristin laid out, we're still working through some of these costs and some of these choices, the balancing of the legs of the stool. But what I think, what we intend to present is something that is within the budget. And then I think the community, we can talk to the community about, well, if it's a $102 million project budget, can we get, you know, an auditorium of this size or a gym of this size and kind of make those decisions as a community? But the committee is really focused on delivering the option within the proposed budget.
Correct. Thank you, Stephen.
My comments... Yeah, go ahead.
My comments are also on this point, and I'm so glad that you're reaching out to the community so diligently. You've been everywhere. This is the 13th presentation. It's great. I do want to agree with Linda, though it's really important for your upcoming large forums to get on specifically the news and notices and the town calendar. I know both the January and February meetings are not on there. So I know you want to hear from the larger community. It's really important to hear from all these different groups that you've mentioned. And then you'll start getting the idea, well, and especially, I'd really like to recommend, if you can give an idea of the cost for the median house. Like if we had the gym of this size and we meet all the educational costs, the median house is this. But now, if we make it a little bigger and accommodate more, the median house is this. Then I think you'll be able to start hearing from people, yes. you'll be able to start hearing from people, yes, I'd be willing to pay for it or no, I wouldn't or have user fees. And I really think those discussions are needed and thank you for seeing that that is such a crucial piece to this.
Linda, if I can just respond. Heather and I was on the Communications Committee before I took on the co-chair role. From the very outset, we've been trying to figure the best way to reach the most people. And then we had some really Jim Dandy ideas and COVID sort of threw a wrench into it, but we have a very large mailing list of organizations and groups and hopefully not the usual suspects either to inform them of what's going on and invite them, sending out invitations for these meetings, these opportunities. So we're, you're absolutely right, we're trying to reach as many people as we can. And then being able to explain what the cost is to the citizens should they decide they want a full-boat auditorium or a gymnasium that'll accommodate the basketball teams in town. I think that's absolutely critical.
I think we're all agreeing, we just need to get to as many people as possible, as early as possible, so that you begin to build that kind of community in terms of not only knowing what they need, but being ready to support you as you move forward. So Susan.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Dawn and Pat and your whole committee, because I know you've worked really hard on this for quite a long time. I wanted to follow up on something some of my colleagues have said about the giving the tax impact to taxpayers about what different levels of service would have. And the other thing I wanted to mention is there's more than one way of funding and I wanted to point out that the BD Center was totally privately funded and then turned over to the town with some endowment for ongoing upkeep. And also there's a, we had a private, public-private partnership document in our packet today and there are quite a number, 50, I'm guessing, of public-private partnerships. The CC fields were done privately and they, a group pays $50,000 a year for the upkeep of the Doug White fields, the artificial turf fields. And there's another group that pays for Ripley, upkeep of Ripley Field. So there are models that exist that the constituencies who are particularly wanting, you know, an art center or athletic complex, there are other ways to do it besides taxpayer dollars. So just wanted to point that out. And then there's another point I wanted to make and it's kind of parallel to this, but it's not really in the building under that envelope, is that it's a fairly big building and it's, I heard Dr. Hunter mention, I think it was at the league meeting about their team teaching and currently there's some teachers that teach with two teams and there would be a team for, a team of teachers for each of the three teams in each grade. And I'm wondering what the cost of that staffing model is compared to what we have now because that plus the, you know, how much it takes to run this, because that's a baked-in every year expense that we should have an idea about before we get to the point where we say, oh, yeah, we want this building and then, oh, by the way, it's going to cost this much to do it every year. And I know that's not specifically your, in your charge, but I think it should be looked at and given to the public. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments or, Matt, go ahead.
So as the liaison to this committee, I have been in awe of the sheer scale of the endeavor, but, you know, and it is a project with, you know, deadlines and, you know, big objectives. So the governance of it, though, is still in part a mystery to me and the, in particular, I think it's the notion of a leadership team and a working group. I don't really know how those fit and in particular relative to open meeting law, I don't know what standing or not that they have or how that interacts with the committee's charge. And so I'm just, again, curious about those structures.
So I can, I can speak briefly to both and then anybody feel free to chime in from our committee, but the management team or leadership team, sometimes called one or the other, that is truly just to make sure that we're complying with our contracts in terms of the OPM and the designer. So, so in terms of an administrative level, so it's not any decision-making body or anything of that sort. It's really just a business operations kind of check-in. And then the, so, and we did review the open meeting law requirements to make sure that it wasn't in conflict and we did also even go back to when the subcommittees were originally set up and the management team is reflected in the building committee's decisions around creating a group that would be responsible for just that check-in. So we did look back at that after your original concern was raised. And then the working groups are just a way that the design team needs to access a lot of people for a lot of information and a lot of, you know, throughout the process. And so we just gathered anyone who had an interest in any known groups that had interests in the auditorium and the gym so that we could understand what programs are offered there. So again, it's kind of a, just an information gathering group and, and we've done the same, we've asked the same questions, quite frankly, in all of our meetings because we want to make sure we didn't miss anyone in terms of understanding what the auditorium and the gymnasium do to serve programs.
Just to build on Kristin's point, I know the, the most school building projects, even MSBA structured ones where the, where the school building committee is, is set by state statute, they do have kind of an executive, you know, exec leadership committee, whatever you want to call it, that deals with like contract kind of business issues. So this is a fairly standard approach and actually, one of the things I think is really kind of great about this project is the, the committee overall, the group you have here has a tremendous amount of experience. In a prior life, I was a part of an MSBA high school project. Dawn is a, is currently designing MSBA school projects. Pat's going through her own building project. Lori has been through building projects as well. And then when you, then beyond us, you get to the broader committee and there's a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience on whether it's education or sustainability or any of the subjects that'll be, that this group will touch. So I think the community should feel really good that it's got excellent representation on the middle school building committee and a lot of experience, direct experience with these types of projects. So I, I know that I can see just even, like I said, even as somewhat of a, someone came in from the outside when the committee was established, I was blown away by the level of specific experience. So I do want to convey that I do think the project is in very good hands.
Any other comments or questions from select board members? If not, I, at this time, because we have the specific guests here today, I would entertain any public questions for this group presenting the middle school project? Okay, seeing none right now or hearing none. I'm going to thank all of you for this presentation. I know that you're hard at work. You've got a lot to do on a very tight time schedule. I know that that time schedule includes a possible meeting, special town meeting in the fall. So, and there are a lot of forums and community input that needs to be gathered in the interim. So I wish you well and hope you will continue to do everything you can to make these meetings include as many people as possible in these public meetings. Thank you, everyone.
We will. Thank you. And our next school building committee meeting is Thursday at 7:30 a.m. and we are talking schedule and construction delivery methods. If anyone's interested in those topics, feel free, 7:30 a.m., grab your coffee and come listen in or follow, you know, follow along afterwards. But thank you so much for having us and we look forward to coming back.
An irresistible invitation. Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is non-binding resolution for a just transition to building decarbonization in the Commonwealth. And in our packets today are a non-binding resolution that we're asked to consider and this is in keeping with trying to support our board goals and our envisioned Concord goals. And do I have someone here to speak to this? I see Kate. Good. Kate, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Kate Hanley, Sustainability Director. I'm pleased to chat a little bit about this request from behalf of the Climate Action Advisory Board and Jake Swenson, who is the Chair of the Board, is on as well, so he can chime in. But I thought I would just give a little introduction. I know in your packet you had a brief memo explaining the intent, but I thought for the benefit of the attendees and just to tee up any questions that you might have, I can kind of just talk through quickly what the, what the request is. So CAB is requesting your signature on this non-binding resolution. As Linda said, it would be sent to the state legislature, the governor and state agencies, and it calls for a commitment for a just transition away from fossil fuels at the state level and allow for municipal action. And the reason for this is, as you know, you know, in order to meet Concord's goals and the state's goals, we need to decarbonize our built environment, but Massachusetts municipalities are really limited in what we can do legally to accelerate that transition of electrification of buildings. And this was made even more clear last summer with the Attorney General's decision on a Brookline bylaw that would have prohibited new fossil fuel infrastructure. And the Select Board was prepared to bring a very similar bylaw to last year's town meeting, but because of that decision, it wasn't moved. So understanding that a bylaw like that is not possible, a number of us, including the Climate Action Advisory Board, have been looking at what can we do? So this resolution is step one of a larger strategy to move forward on decarbonizing our buildings. And so the resolution signals to the state that communities need help to get this done. It's non-binding, but a lot of communities are moving forward with this approach, so there is some power in numbers with Concord bringing this forward with other communities. And I mentioned this as part of, you know, step one of a larger strategy. The next step of that strategy is a home rule petition to move forward what was planned for Article 40 at last year's town meeting and CAB will be presenting this at a, at a future Select Board meeting. So the last thing I would just say is I know you've been seeing quite a bit of me and we've, we've talked a lot about the climate bill and a lot of other climate things going on lately, so just wanted to mention how this aligns with that. So if a climate bill is signed into law, it would certainly, it could certainly address the issue of accelerating electrification of buildings, particularly if it includes a net zero stretch code. But given that the first climate bill was vetoed by the governor and in his veto, he cited the net zero stretch code as a particular concern. And then just yesterday, when that same climate bill was sent back to the governor, he proposed some amendments that seemed to continue to express concerns with the net zero stretch code. So it suggests that maybe this is even more important now than it was even before the climate legislation when this resolution was, was in the works. So as I said, mentioned, this, this was in the works before the climate bill. It's been edited to reflect that there has been some climate legislation and emphasize support for continuing to push forward with that. So I'll stop there and just say thank you for taking your time to dedicate to these kinds of climate leadership measures. They're really important and I will see if Jake Swenson wants to add anything from the perspective of Climate Action Advisory Board and happy to take your questions.
Thanks so much, Kate. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sorry, I'm not on video. I'm just in a tough internet area, so wanted to minimize the bandwidth. But I think Kate did a terrific job of providing that overview and just would emphasize that, you know, the CAB is unanimously in support of taking this, this step and would really appreciate the Select Board's support in moving forward this non-binding resolution to, again, you know, send that signal to the state that, you know, Concord is serious about our, our climate commitments and this is an important element of helping us move closer to that, to that goal. So thank you so much for the, for the time and the opportunity.
Susan.
Yeah, I just had a question for Kate or Jake, I'm not sure which. So the bill was passed again by the legislature and is on the governor's desk and it, I believe I read that the, it was passed so strongly that it, there were enough votes to override the governor's veto. Is that correct?
One of the articles did say that, yes.
So, okay, just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from board members?
Linda, I don't know whether you could see my hand. This is Jane, but I...
No, good, Kate. Thank you.
Thank Kate and thank the Climate Action Advisory Board for all of the work on both this resolution and also Alice Kaufman and the folks at the RMI Institute project because, you know, all of these, what I'd call the, even though this is a non-binding resolution, the, the practical steps or points of movement towards actually enacting our, our goals and our principles is critical. It's critical for every town and community in the Commonwealth and it's, it's critical for every state in the country. And I say that as a Select Board member, very supportive of all of this, I also say that as an energy professional. And I hope that my fellow Select Board members are, you know, will see the value here as a, as a somewhat of a no-brainer for us. It's completely consistent with our principles and our stated goals and clearly we were ready to move forth a warrant article last year for, for greater action had that, had the Attorney General not vetoed that process. And I also wanted to say that I know that both, both Senator Barrett and Representative Goulet would be fully in support of this, as well as our federal representative, Lori Trahan, who I had a chance to speak to earlier today. So thank you, Kate. You guys are really doing phenomenal things and, and this is just, you know, one more example of a baby step.
So I would also draw the parallel that this is not unlike what we've considered for our, towards our affordable housing goals, where there are incremental steps in terms of items, letters of support, et cetera, that we send up to pending, regarding pending legislation at the state level, sometimes knowing that it's probably not going to get enacted on in that particular timeframe where we send these letters of support, but it's consistent with our principles and as over time, these things are incremental in terms of more and more legislatures coming on board. So moving back to the resolution before us, are there any other comments or questions from Select Board members? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Linda?
Yes, I'm sorry, Terry. Go ahead. I can't see everyone, so.
Sure. So I think I'm in support of this. I'm just curious if someone could very briefly, Kate or Jake or anyone, explain just very briefly what the governor's concerns are and why he's opposed.
In a nutshell, he's concerned about the housing market. He's gotten a lot of pushback from housing realtor industries and that that's what he's cited as his concern, that they don't want to slow down the development of housing because housing is an important of Massachusetts priorities and in particular affordable housing. There have been a lot of responses to that, you know, citing that net zero housing is happening now. It is effective and it's been used in a lot of affordable housing because not only is it cost-effective, but it's beneficial to the tenants who then pay lower utility bills. But that's the, that's the kind of high-level version.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Matt.
Sorry. Sorry. I can't see all of you at one time. That's the problem.
I can give you some tips on that sometime. So I just have to say, to me, I really am patient to be able to move beyond signing non-binding resolutions and taking concrete actions. And I totally sympathize that this is where we're at. It's really tragic considering just the monumental challenges that we face. And just my frustration is just huge and I don't know what else to say, but it just depresses me to sign documents like this.
We'll have to cheer you up after the session is over. I could see that. All right. Now are we ready for a motion?
Move to endorse a non-binding resolution calling for the Massachusetts State Legislature, Massachusetts Governor, Department of Public Utilities, Board of Building Regulations and Standards, and the Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development to commit to a just transition to building decarbonization in the Commonwealth.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous and the chair so declares. So thank you, Kate and Jake, for bringing this to our attention and giving us the opportunity to chew on it a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is to get comments on the third draft of the Concord 2025 Executive Committee Charge. I did try to incorporate some of the feedback I heard at our last meeting. And I do want to make an additional correction to what you have on the last paragraph for other considerations, where it's suggested that APP 10 will not apply to this committee or its subcommittees. It should have said APP number 10, Section 7, subsection D, which refers to the appointment policy and procedures and specifically the language in committee transfers. And let me tell you what that language says in committee transfers. In general, a member of one committee shall only be considered for appointment to another committee upon completion of the can't read my writing here, on completion of the term of office for that committee is the gist of it, anyway. So it was not to ignore the entire APP 10, but that particular section that would allow existing committee members to serve on this committee or any subcommittee, just given the nature of the number of people and expertise that's going to be needed for the committee. Okay?
Thank you, Linda. That's going to go a long way to getting in front of any complications.
Right. And this, I did include that in the third paragraph, which is highlighted in blue, I did define the terms of the committee that would commence immediately and extend through December 2026. And I've added a number nine, which is file a comprehensive final report with the Select Board on or before December 31st, 2026. And again, that was just to be consistent with the nature of the charge to the committee. And because of the scale and scope of the celebration, hopefully, the committee will do a full report before they dissolve, much like all the material that is now currently archived in our library and was available in our packet last meeting. Yes, Terry?
So this draft looks really good. There's one thing I thought of that I should have thought of last week, but one of the goals stated, I think it's number six. I forget, something about trying to have a very diverse committee.
Yes.
And so in the membership, I think what's not there, that maybe we should add something like trying to have a person of color or a person from the Native American community or a person with disabilities. And I'm really thinking about the history of our country and even the history in Concord, where, you know, sometimes minority groups are not included in the history. And it might be really good if we could get somebody who had that knowledge or could represent a minority community.
So there could be a statement added that committee and subcommittee membership will make every effort to include da-da-da-da-da-da-da.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'm thinking of things like the Robbins House that we've incorporated and how we don't want to leave that out.
Yeah.
I guess, though, my comment would be, don't we have this as a general principle for staffing any committee in town?
I would hope we do, but it's
But it's not spelled out.
It's not explicit.
That we
We talked about the importance of that in respect to the library committee when they first brought their initial draft charge to us and they wanted to incorporate some specific language in their draft charge. But it's not explicit in APP 10.
Right. We did come up with that committee process, right, the recruitment and all that process.
Yeah.
But that's not, I guess, yet enshrined in the town policy.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that's just, it was mine.
Okay.
Then, maybe I should move into other comments here. Just one other comment, which was just on charge number five. I thought that just to qualify, you know, to participate, you know, you talk about to get other organizations or individuals to participate, you know, and I would think to, in the production or creation of, and then I thought, historical, educational, arts and cultural programming. I mean, in other words, those are the kinds of things that we would expect to come out of this.
Say that list again, please, just to make sure I've got it all.
Historical, educational, arts and cultural.
Programming.
Yeah. And then I like the membership changes. I think the tighter board that you've proposed is good and, yeah.
Yeah. So a question is still, a question was brought to my attention from just recently about whether, I included a range of nine to 12, but as you can see, I think I captured three, six, three, six, nine. Looks like I've got 12.
Yeah.
I think I would just assume leave it 12 and then there's no ambiguity there. All right. With, is everyone comfortable with all the additions that we've talked about? And because if possible, I'd like to move to approve this so that we can get this rolling.
Move to approve the Concord 2025 Executive Committee Charge as presented today, draft number three.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous and the chair so declares. And putting the public on notice that this committee is now open for green cards to come into the town office. So this is going to be an exciting opportunity and an exciting adventure right through all the activities for '24, '25 and '26.
If you didn't have a chance to look at that report from the 1975 efforts, I think the report was a few years after. Matt, you left youth sports off of your list there. Like the number of sports tournaments. I mean, it was a lot of activity. I was blown away by the stuff they did back then.
Yeah.
That's a high bar.
It is, indeed. All right. We have no committee nominations today. Committees rely on reports. Susan, she does not want to break her record. Her hands the first in the air.
I had a few meetings last week. Economic Vitality Committee met and talked about a number of things, but one was about what might be done to allow outdoor dining after COVID-19. And that involves perhaps some bylaw changes, so they're going to explore that a little further. Beth reported, our Tourism Director, reported that she is applying for travel and tourism recovery grants and that we're also partnering with Lexington to create a joint campaign to draw visitors from 50 miles and further away. There are 30 CCHS students from the Student Senate that have signed up to help businesses develop their websites or social media or e-commerce, whatever their needs are. And going forward, they realized that, the committee met in January, COVID hit in February, so they've been on a COVID, a support for local businesses since then. So going forward, they're going to meet twice a month, one month, one meeting will be the continuing COVID support things that they can do and the other will be a more strategic, what is their longer-range purpose. Cemetery Committee met. They had a presentation by Boston Scanning, who was a company that scanned all of the paper records. And eventually, it will be, you'll be able to put in a name and pull up a record. It all has to be arranged. But that was pretty exciting because it's been in boxes. And they did say that the records were impeccable. So thank you to the cemetery staff for that. They also discussed, I think it was the Friends of the Cemetery that wrote a letter about ZBA project that they're going to be hearing about, the property 18 Windmill Hill Road proposed project, which involved the fence and borders on the cemetery property. The members had a fairly lengthy discussion about it and they decided they were not going to weigh in with any advice to the ZBA. They did not have, as a group, didn't have objections to the project, but decided not to say anything one way or the other. Board of Assessors met on February 4th and it was a fairly routine meeting where they reviewed abatement applications and then went into executive session for some other abatement applications. They're ramping up the frequency of the meetings to go through the, they had about 50-some applications, so they can meet on the 11th of February this week and then the 25th to continue that process to try to work through all of those. The other two meetings I attended were the Concord Business Partnership and Stephen and Carrie were there to talk about the town budget and then kind of segued into a number of questions about NMI Starment reuse, which had appeared, had presented to the partnership the month before, but they didn't have a lot of time to present all of the information. And I also attended the league presentation by the middle school committee and it was very informative. That's it for me.
Thank you, Susan. Terry?
Okay, so last week I didn't have anything, so I have several items this week. Local Cultural Council met. They have, they're working on their new cycle of grant funding. They have 23 applications, $11,000 something in requests and they have about $8,000 to give out. So they're planning to vote next meeting, which is February 17th. The library met and the Library Corporation was present. Sherri Litwack explained a number of comments and suggestions that they have regarding the administrative code. You'll recall that the Select Board was working with the library on that administrative code. So they're going to further discuss it at the next meeting and then they'll be back to the Select Board for our comment and approval. There is a sudden vacancy on the Library Committee, so anyone, again, with your green cards, this is because Pat Nelson had to resign unexpectedly because she has a large time commitment now, as you heard, with the middle school. And the library is again requesting diversity. They're especially seeking young people, possibly high school, men, they don't have any men on their committee, people with disabilities, anybody with a unique perspective is really strongly encouraged to submit your green card to the Library Committee. And finally, in their budget request, they have a number of requests for staffing. Some are related to the expanded building project and some are restoring architecture position and increasing help to special collections. Another meeting that happened was the West Concord Junction Cultural District. And I did not attend it because it was at the same time as the library. However, it was a short meeting and they did send a letter to the Select Board, which I think you well received, about Junction Park. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee had quite an interesting meeting. There was a lot going on. First of all, Marsha Rasmussen and Uncle Boss, the curator at the library, have been working on that interpretive panel in the Warren Pond area that's highlighting the white row houses that were demolished in the 1990s. They showed a photo of the draft panel and it really is sensational. The steel bridge that's being constructed over Route 2 is expected to be completed this summer. So that's exciting news. And they're working hard at the last half mile going in the southern part of Concord, headed towards Sudbury. They're hard at work with the additional fencing and the gates. There'll be a site walk in May. And they're coordinating really well with the Sudbury team. They've received a Community Connections Grant for bike shelters and bike racks that will be located in West Concord near the railroad station. So speaking of Junction Park, as you know, the Green Thumbs have identified some issues there. And the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee has sent a letter to the Select Board and the Town Manager urging us to consider three steps. One is improved signage. One is to conduct a study or audit of the park usage. And one is to identify and appoint an ad hoc task force to develop options for the long-term solution and possible rerouting of bicycles through Junction Park. And then the big issue at this meeting was the reformatory branch discussion. The two co-chairs were very articulate and apologetic in saying that they kind of got overly enthusiastic and put the cart before the horse. They have sent a letter now to the Select Board. They want to see us do some type of planning. It doesn't matter to them if it's the Bruce Freeman them if it's the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail or any other entity. The Transportation Advisory Committee could be the entity or a new entity, doesn't matter. But they're just arguing that there should be some sort of planning. And there was a lot of public comment at this meeting. Lots of use, there's lots of uses already on this trail, and a wide diversity of uses. There's lots of walkers, all different age groups. So I think that they're right. We need some kind of community discussion of what will be happening with this path. It's even just a gravel path right now, or a cobblestone path. So I am hoping that we will have it on the agenda at a future Select Board meeting to hear from these different voices in town. And yeah, I attended the league meeting on the middle school also. It was excellent.
Thank you, Terry.
Could I just add one more thing I neglected to say, and that is that the Board of Assessors is looking for another member. So anyone out there listening, please consider that and send in a green card. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Okay, who would like to go next? Jane or Matt?
Go ahead.
Okay, Matt.
So I went to the WR Grace info session for Acton's Superfund site, and I found that very enlightening because, most of all, because the site in Acton is still controlled by WR Grace. Unlike StarMet, they did not go out of business. And that dramatically changes the way that the whole process is managed. And I have to say, I think that we are fortunate in Concord to have more say-so over what may happen on that site. WR Grace, you know, is pursuing various development options, and, you know, it's up to them to a great degree. The other thing that I found interesting was just the degree to which the cleanup efforts have proceeded and improved the quality, the environmental quality at that site. And also, something that's pertinent to us, questions have been raised about, well, what happens if, post the initial cleanup, additional toxins are discovered, you know, that weren't understood at the time? And, you know, there in fact have been a couple of those there at the Acton site and that the EPA continues to work upon. So, you know, there is a process for ongoing responsibility and cleanup, you know, with, as new things are discovered. And in terms of our risk management process, I think, you know, within Concord, that's going to be a relevant point of discussion. I see, Jane, you've got your hand up, so I'll let you.
I just wanted to ask you a question because I was involved as a Select Board member when the discussions were between, as we were citing our solar facility on our side of the WR Grace site. And there was a request from WR Grace as well as the Town of Acton that we grant a, you know, give WR Grace access vis-à-vis Knox Trail and therefore the, our side of the site into the Acton site so that it didn't have to be impactful on the residents, which is where the access point is on the Acton side. That was not, we resolved it in a way that allowed for monitors, monitoring of wells, but not for regular usage. So I'm wondering if access during this next phase of cleanup was discussed? Because that's clearly, I'm hoping, an Acton inside of Acton response.
It was a pretty brief presentation, very succinct presentation. I don't think that there was much on that. I mean, there is a thirty-acre solar site that's being developed there, solar field. So, but I don't recall anything about how access is to and from, other than they did comment that there's likely to be very, very little traffic related to this use. So, should I proceed? So next, I may as well go to the NMI StarMet. So that committee spent most of its meeting looking at the draft executive summary and proposing edits to that, and also discussing feedback from other committees in the public, which is continuing to come in. And I would just like to encourage those members of other committees in the public to, you know, look at this report, the draft report that's already available, and to make your comments known to the committee so that they can produce a nicer draft report for us to read. So then, the next is the Housing Authority. Their, the great news for the Housing Authority was that there are now three candidates for the elected positions, filling all the elected slots. That's, I consider that a big win. And the, there are also many applications for the Executive Director position, so there's no shortage of people that want to apply for that. And then the committee did spend, the Authority spent a fair amount of the rest of the meeting discussing what input it might have to the NMI StarMet committee, and they struggled a bit with that. They will consider kind of a brief statement, but they didn't really feel, as folks that operate affordable housing, that, you know, it was really, the technical issues of risk and all of those things didn't, weren't things that they felt capable of responding to. Then, I guess that's it for the committees that I did attend.
Thank you, Matt.
I have a question. I'm not sure that I heard you cut out a little bit. Matt, you're talking about any future toxins that might be discovered, and you said that it would be relevant or irrelevant. I didn't really hear.
Irrelevant. No, it's relevant to our discussion, because there have been questions raised about what would happen if new toxins are discovered post the process of the initial cleanup. And so this gives a case study, if you will, of that happening. Of, you know, the EPA finding these and now remediating, you know, these new toxins that were discovered much later.
So as an example of that, ifor dioxin was not part of the initial discovery and remediation for the WR Grace property, but the EPA has now identified that, as well as Mass Environmental Protection has identified that as an issue for the entire state. And so EPA has now made a commitment to go in and look at that, as Matt already pointed out, for the WR Grace site in Acton.
Right. So my question is, let's say, ten years from now, the town purchases this property, and then thirty years from now, they discover a new toxin. My understanding is that the town will not have that liability, even though we own the property. That's what I guess I'm trying to ask. Is that correct?
So, I don't, I don't, I believe it is correct. However, I am not, you know, an environmental attorney, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the committee. And there is a whole section on risk communication in the draft report that we will read, and this is an ongoing topic of discussion for the committee.
If I can just briefly, I'll touch on that. That's going to all be part of a series of agreements and documents that will have to be proposed and negotiated that we'll have to be satisfied with before the town would take ownership, based on feedback from council and others. So I guess it's safe to say that obviously the town doesn't want to take ownership and have that kind of liability. So it's something that we'll be monitoring carefully, but it's, that's still a few years away, I would think.
Yeah. And actually, the EPA has offered to write what they call a comfort letter, which effectively outlines their responsibilities. And so there's discussion about soliciting such a letter from them.
It'll just be more complicated for us if we do go ahead with the NMI property because Grace is still the owner, and so they assume all the liability for the Acton situation. But because we've had all kinds of bankruptcies in terms of previous owners, it's a little more complicated for us doing our due diligence going forward. But every comment that's already been made by all of you is correct. Matt, did that conclude your remarks?
It did.
Okay, thank you for all of that. Jane?
And I just wanted to clarify, because I know I got a little confused at the conversation, but just that we were talking about WR Grace, which is a wholly separate Superfund site on the other side of-
Not even in Concord, yeah.
Right, exactly. And we're talking about the piece of WR Grace, which is on the Acton side, because we've already negotiated and taken care of with WR Grace and EPA, the remediation of the piece that's actually in Concord. So what Linda was clarifying was, the, you know, the mark that exists for us at NMI StarMet, because there isn't, there is not a-
Exactly. This is, I just was talking about it as a case study, as a point of comparison for us, yeah.
Exactly. I just know that, having spent a lot of time in this space over the last six years, it's easy to get lost. So, all right, I had two meetings to report on. One was the Natural Resources Commission, which met on the third. And, you know, we've discussed the White Pond Forum, which is coming up tomorrow night at six o'clock. Stay tuned, look for it on our news and notices, and I believe, right, or at least on the website. Because as I think that Stephen alluded to, there should be a new set of project designs to actually look at that are much improved based on the input from the public.
Scroll down on the Twitter feed. Scroll down on the Twitter feed.
Yeah, right. And everybody, everybody in Concord, especially those who have been so closely engaged in the White Pond area, should be thanked for their input, because it's a better, it's a better project now than it was before. And the other continuance that was worth noting was, are also continued from this meeting, the discussion of the Middlesex Schools' proposed turf fields. And as has been ongoing, there's a continued debate over the analysis, the alternatives analysis that's being conducted on the state of the art in turf. And I hope that, again, that the ultimate project that's proposed and agreed upon, if that happens, by the, by the NRC, will reflect the amount, the number of questions and the amount of study that we've, we have pushed for. We, as in the public at large and the commissioners. And then there were a number of other things continued, but not quite as much of note. Several closed-issue decisions. But then the points I wanted to focus on were that, under other business, one was the beginning of a discussion about the fifty-foot no-bill policy. Obviously, not removing it, nobody should think that, but looking at adjustments that reflect the way it's handled more consistently in Concord. Because, well, because we need to, we need to adjust it to reflect Concord approach versus leaving it to the set of NRC commissioners that happened to hear a project proposal to determine where in the range of impacts, you know, a shed might fit versus a building versus something else. And I'm just using those as complete reference points, not as actual discussion moments. And the other piece was a return to the neonicotinoid discussion, which really reminds me and reminded all of us of the need to reinvigorate the Pollinator Subcommittee, because this came up under discussion of the White Pond lands, which is not surprising since they're abutting White Pond, they're part of the larger conversation, but also an entire conversation of what is the town's policy and where should it be applied, and what is a pre-existing product, you know, what is grandfathered, what isn't, and what approaches should be, should or should not be continued. Again, no, this was not a decision point. It was a, you know, it's, it may be cold, and there may be more snow coming, but it's still the beginning of spring for many in the agricultural community. So in terms of just seed purchasing, this is an important, this is an important conversation to have now. And then the other committee was the Historic Districts Commission, which I have to admit that I was interrupted midway through by a, by some residents in Concord that had a separate conversation they needed to grab me for. And probably the most exciting thing to be discussed here was, from my vantage point, was the new ownership of the Hawthorne Inn, which a couple has purchased, and they are now converting it to a private home and residence.
No kidding.
So, but it was also, it was sort of a wonderful, the, one member of the couple, she grew up here in Concord, and her, her great-grandfather, her grandfather was one of the masons that worked on the original, a number of the original foundations, for instance, in the Concord Museum and other places. So she has very, very deep roots in this, in this space. And they, you know, they were coming to the HDC with their, you know, laying out what they wanted to do, but clearly saying, you tell us where, where we could be the best stewards of this property and the best stewards from an American Mile Historic Districts perspective before we formulate our plans and come back. And I think that that was really well received by everybody on the HDC. The other discussion was further work on a, on a home on Lexington Road, which, which clearly, which, the proposal has been for significant enough changes to the frontis of the house, which would have but Lexington Road, and therefore be, you know, right in the middle of the jurisdiction of the HDC, that there's going to be a site, a site visit, and clear that the, the HDC was fully divided on whether the proposal was within keeping of what, what the HDC's mission is in terms of, or not mission, but their responsibilities to the American Mile. And then the other pieces here, again, I apologize for having had to jump out, especially because there was continued discussion of Jenny Dugan as a Historic District, and also the Main Street Historic Districts expansion, and I'll try and follow up next week.
Okay, thanks, Jane. Will you, does that conclude your report? Yeah, thanks very much. Okay. I attended the Financial Audit Committee, and the majority of the time was talking about the management letter for the town's 2020 report. The auditors will be coming to the Select Board at our next meeting on the twenty-second to walk us through the audit, including the management letter. I also attended the WR Grace evening, and I have to say, I agree with Matt, did an excellent job capturing the content. It was fascinating. I thought it was well worth being there to hear that form and all the, actually, very well thought out and relevant questions from the audience. And I think the takeaway for me was EPA's continuing role was one of the takeaways. And I think the takeaway for me was EPA's continuing role was one of the takeaways. The other takeaway was that EPA specifically commented that solar arrays seems to have been the best use of several of the super funds that they're working on across the state. So that was also interesting. There was some, a brief conversation about access. And I don't remember the details of that, Jane, but I certainly can go back and look at my notes if there's anything further that you want to know about that. And then I attended the FinCom meeting, Guidelines meeting, and we've already heard and seen the Town Manager's report. And I think really he has given us all heads up about some of the challenges he and Kerry are facing as they're working on the budget going forward for this coming year. So that concludes my remarks. So I think we're ready for public comment. Any public comment? Okay.
I have a, I have a comments.
Yes, Todd Benjamin.
Yes, hi, Todd Benjamin, Sudbury Road. Thanks for letting me ask my question. I wanted to understand how the Select Board is using its powerful voice to support Concord students and families and the need to get our children back to school full-time and in person as soon as possible.
Okay. You know, I think that's a shared, I'll just comment briefly that, you know, that certainly is uppermost on the minds of the school district as well. And I think they're trying to move in that direction as quickly as they can.
And how is the Select Board supporting the administration and the teachers and the parents in the community who wants to see our children back in school full-time?
It's certainly a comment that is a liaison to the school committee I can make during public comment. Any other responses?
I was just going to offer also, I know that I saw another report from, from our superintendent today about some new COVID cases within the middle school and in the parent group or the adult group within the Ripley space. So, you know, one of the obvious pressure points is where we are in vaccines and where we are with curtailing our, the infection within the student population. And that's one of the reasons why I would, I would, I, as a Select Board member, would look first to our Department of Public Health and the superintendent to advise on what makes sense in terms of next steps towards going back full-time. In full appreciation to the impact of having kids home, you know, and doing virtual, virtual education. I have had my own share of that, not at, not at a high school and under level, and I can't imagine that. So I don't want to sound unsympathetic. I just, I, I look to us to support, first and foremost, the Department of Public Health and obviously work with our Town Manager, but also to support the superintendent, who is far closer to the, to the daily environment that all of the students and teachers are in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. All right. Any other public comments?
Diane Proctor, please.
Yes, Diane.
Hi, 57 Sudbury Road, Diane Proctor. I want to thank Stephen, and you would thank Erin Stevens for getting the White Pond Advisory Forum up on the calendar. Great move. The electronic green card, I just wonder if the next meeting you all might emphasize how people can sign up for a green card, since they can't really go to the town to get one. There is a site here that says the electronic green card, but when I go on that, I don't necessarily find an easy way to, I'm not trying to sign up for a committee, but if someone wished to, I think that we just need to emphasize how that, how that works so that when we say there's a, you know, please sign up for a green card, I think it would be helpful for people to just be reminded how to do that, if that's okay. Thank you very much. A great meeting. Thank you.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Okay. All right. Any other comments? Okay. Miscellaneous correspondence, there was some in the packet. There were some things that were received late. There was a citizens, there was correspondence from a group of citizens who are supporting the Finance Committee's decision not to fund legal costs for Esterbrook from the Reserve Legal, Reserve Fund for the FinCom. And that was in support of the 2020, last year's decision. There was also correspondence from an individual citizen who did not want to see the FinCom supporting use of the Reserve Fund to cover overage and legal funds. And there was additional correspondence from the West Concord Cultural Commission regarding safety and signage for Junction Park, that I think Terry referred to earlier. Give, and they were concerned about safety and signage, given the multiple years users of that space and concerns for everyone there. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates. Aye.
That's unanimous. No surprise, and the chair so declares. Thanks, everyone, for a good meeting. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.